And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That takes us to item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of the July fourteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes. Do I have a motion made by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi, any amendments? Vice Chair Barnes?
We're gonna start on page five. On line two ten, it says Board Member Powell asked if this could opt of the focus, should be opt out of the focus monitoring. On the same page, line two twenty-three, only because it's an acronym, if we could spell it out and then we can use the acronym going forward, it's SASID, which is State Assigned Student Identifier. On to page six, line two seventy-four. It's the last sentence we want to add to it, so it says she requested that Director Fabrizio address the topic during the budget process. I want to add, as it relates to long-term strategy of having MEEP programs, which is Meramec Early Education Programs, at all three elementary schools. And then on to page eight, and that will be my final edit, once I find another one. It's line three forty-two. And we just want to clarify the language, so if we could read it to say, "Vice Chair Barnes asked that there be another pilot with the revisions prior to rolling out." So, not revisions to the document, but another pilot showing those revisions. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other amendments? No? Mr. Powell? Okay, I had a few that were not called on. Page three, line one thirty-six. Simple insertion of the word "to" between volunteers and teach. On page four, starting on line one forty-seven, but I think there are more places in the document where this reoccurs. If we could change it to be Vice Chair Barnes, as opposed to Board Member Barnes, that happens in different places inconsistently within the document. On the same page, on line one seventy-eight, I believe we want to insert the word "unified" before volleyball team. This was when Special Services Director was talking about the high school unified volleyball team. Similarly, on page five, there are more references to Board Member Barnes. On page six of nine, line two sixty-eight, if we can just strike the word "to", ask that the board consider waiving the two-week rule. And that was all that I had. So with that, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the July fourteenth, two thousand fourteen minutes as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye. That motion carries five zero zero. Which takes us now to item number three on tonight's agenda, public participation. Is there anyone from the public looking to address the board? Seeing none, I will close public participation. And we'll move to item number four, acceptance of gifts and grants under five thousand dollars, Business Administrator Matt Chevino.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have a gift to the Meramec Middle School. The donor is the New Hampshire Fish and Game Department, Levinhazen Drive in Concord. And the amount is three hundred dollars. The purpose of the gift is to plant wild roses to support the cotton-tail rabbit habitat on the middle school grounds. There's a project report that's going to be due because of this endeavor. And we are, we're doing it right now, acknowledging the New Hampshire Fish and Game on a public record. So, that is the extent of the gifts and grants this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion. Vice Chair Barnes?
I move we accept the gift from New Hampshire Fish and Game with our thanks.
Thank you. Is there a second made by Ms. Gualyumi? Would you like to speak to it?
No.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If there's none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. That motion carries five zero zero. Which takes us now to item number five, the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we have the following teacher nominations. Andrew Bray, part-time oral language teacher at Meramec High School. And if I might just add, we're happy to welcome Andrew back. He's a Meramec High School graduate. And we're happy to have him in our employ. Jessica Field, ESOL teacher at Meramec Middle School and Meramec High School. Ryan Hagerty, social studies teacher at Meramec Middle School. Robert Huckins, social studies teacher at Meramec High School. Hannah Lowell, grade six teacher at Mastrocola Upper Elementary School. Milagros Santiago, oral language teacher at Meramec High School. And Matthew Stemkowski, science teacher at Meramec High School, who is also, I'm pleased to point out, a Meramec High School graduate as well. In addition, we have the following teacher resignation. Patience Joy, health teacher at Meramec Middle School. And we have an administrator resignation, Jay Greton, assistant principal at Mastrocola Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Schneider?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second made by Mr. Powell? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as read signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. That motion carries five zero zero. And that takes us to item number six on tonight's agenda, entrance to James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School when used as a polling site. I'll invite Mr. Tom Tussow to the table. And as Mr. Tussow comes to address us, I'll provide a little bit of background. I believe folks may recall that prior to the April election or town meeting that took place at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, it was the first time that we were holding an election there since putting in the secured entrances. And there was a stated desire of the board, if at all possible, to keep those secured entrances locked and find a way that voters could enter and exit the polling place in the APR through one of the external entrances with concern for the safety of the students and the fact that adult populations would be coming in and out of the building. Through discussions at that time with the town moderator and town clerk, we were given some guidance that said that we should have a single entrance for all voters and that entrance need be handicap accessible. Subsequent to that discussion, the board allowed those entrances to be open for the purposes of voting on those days. And things went off just fine in terms of student safety. But, we also go through significant steps in terms of keeping students away from that area of the school. Lunch is held in a different area. And it's continually monitored by both staff as well as the police department who come. At the time, there were a couple of follow-ups that happened. One was, I requested of the town clerk the guidance from the Secretary of State as it relates to polling places and what is and is not required. And that was in our packets this past week. At the same time, the superintendent had asked Mr. Tussow to look at what might be done with those exterior entrances in order to make them accessible for voting such that we could continue to keep the school safe and secure through the main entryway and have voting take place entirely in this room sectioned off. And so, Mr. Tussow's done some research on this and wants to share what it is he's found. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for having me here tonight. We're gonna discuss the way of getting into the APR at Mastrocola Elementary School from the outside without going through the school. After our discussions, the logical door to use for us would be the door. As, if you're in the APR, it's the one closest to the stage. It heads out. It's a door that, if you come out of it, you're closest to the Our Lady Church. So, that door, we looked at a number of different ways of approaching it. And we decided there's a couple of alternatives. The first alternative would be building a fully enclosed ramp that would be bringing people in approximately seven feet wide. And it would start, as you're coming out of the APR, you would take immediate left. It would run along the entire building, emptying into the parking lot, right where most people do enter the school at this point. It's roughly seven feet wide. It would have, I said, fully enclosed ramp. And our approximate price, at this point, our estimate would be between one hundred and fifteen and one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, at this point, we have no drawings and no approvals, so that's just an estimate. The other option we came up with is a ramp that is not enclosed. And the ramp that's not enclosed would be roughly between forty-five thousand and fifty thousand. Now, I'm gonna step back for a minute and talk about the enclosed ramp, which was the one fifteen to one twenty-five. That would be enclosed, brick on the outside, ADA, handicap sprinkled. It would be heated, so it would be the whole ball of wax. And it would look just as the school, just like the school entrance was never added. It would just look like the school itself was sitting there all the time. The ramp would be uncovered, and it would just be a regular ramp leading out. As you come out of the APR, you would go to a platform. And from the platform, you would, again, like I said, you'd turn left and you'd go down the ramp there. Now, with it not being covered, being the forty-five to fifty thousand dollars that we're anticipating to cover it, we could easily go to a tent company or something like that. And I asked for an estimate, how much would it cost to put a temporary covering over it for one day? And they said it would be about five hundred to six hundred dollars per event. So, that's something we could, another option we have if we want, even if we wanted to have the ramp that wasn't covered, temporary, to be covered temporary, we could do that also. And those are the two options that we kind of explored at this point.
Great. Any questions? Vice Chair Barnes?
How far out would it extend? I know you said you would come out the door and take a left. Well, there's not a lot of building between the door and where it actually makes a turn to become the entrance. So maybe I'm not visualizing this correctly.
As you're exiting the APR,
Mm-hmm.
there would be a platform there. It would roughly be seven feet away from the building, out seven feet. And then it would immediately turn left and it would run approximately forty feet along the side of the building down to the end of the, to the wall.
Which is, if I'm envisioning it, it's roughly equivalent to the depth of the stage internally, right? Because that door is at the foot of the stage roughly, right? So you've got that additional run of building to the left that...
Right. So I guess my question is, how would it affect, if we go with, it looks like the first one is fairly permanent, correct?
Correct.
How would it affect the traffic flow for a normal day? As far as, would it change the patterns where people would park, people walk in? Do you have to make some adjustments in that area?
The ramp would not extend into the parking area. The ramp would end at the end of the school, right at that corner of the school. That's exactly where it would end.
Right. And I just, I envisioned it being closer to them forty feet. That's where I was trying to envision it, so. So it wouldn't affect anything at all then?
I don't believe so.
And what would be your recommendations based upon if we have things like events at the school, you know, when school's in session? Because I'm looking at the temporary one. And every time we have a parent night, every time we have, if there's a snowstorm or a rainstorm, that you're creating an exposed area with a ramp. And that would be one of the egress opportunities. Do you know what I'm saying?
I...
Would we be renting for every time we had an event at the school or just for elections?
I believe it would be rent, well, what we're renting is just the covering. The ramp itself is permanent. So either way, we'd have a permanent structure there. The covering would be only rented, in my thought of right now, would be just for voting.
So basically, just for comfort, not for safety issues?
Correct. It would be more for a line...
I'm thinking, you know, if it's something that, if it's only for, if it's a January event at the school, that those ramps can end up getting icy and those kind of things. So I'm looking at that end of it too. It's built for one reason but used for ten. So, those are my questions so far.
Great. Mr. Powell?
I'm assuming, and just so that it's out there, that all of this would be ADA compliant?
Absolutely, correct.
With railings, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Schneider?
So just so I'm clear, the enclosed version, you said that, so you mentioned that when you come out that side door for the uncovered one, you go out about seven feet? And then the ramp would turn to the left and go along the, sort of along the building to where the parking lot is down there?
Correct.
Right. So, the covered version of it, you said it would be completely enclosed and sprinkled. Are you talking about the entire thing? The entrance and the entire ramp?
Yes.
And then there would be an entrance door at the bottom?
Correct.
Would that ramp be separated from the building or it would hug along the edge of the building as well?
It would hug along the edge of the building.
So it'd be just like a bump out that would have a, sort of a landing and then a ramp that comes up? There would be a door there that you'd walk up, and then there'd be another door to get into the gym if you were coming into it?
Correct.
I'm just trying to, the old picture worth a thousand words kind of thing, right? So, the comment I have is that this would handle getting into the building to meet these criteria. That would remove potentially one of the items that we talked with the moderator about. Okay, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here as this we're going through.
It's okay. Ms. Gualyumi?
So just to make sure I understand this correctly, the ramp is in consideration of having one entrance into that room versus what we have as an already ADA compliant entrance at the main entrance, correct?
Correct. It would address the problem of entering that area, the APR, without going through the school.
And how often would we use that? I'm trying to think of how often we would use that besides for election purposes.
So, typically, we use that room annually for the April town meeting. And in every other year, we use it in September for the primary, state primary voting.
But school's not in session?
Well, school is in session...
For the...
September.
For the...
For the November election that's held, we have agreed to use the high school and will not have school in session on those days. But September and April, we do have school in session.
Right, but the other uses besides the election? Any other uses?
Oh, I'm, of the APR room?
Correct.
Oh, there's, there's any number of...
That where we would use that, where that ramp would be used?
When, when, when school is in session? I don't know that there would be. I mean, that room is used quite a bit, right? MYA uses it for basketball games, but those are practices that take place after hours and on weekends. So, during school hours, I don't see a tremendous amount of additional use of that.
If we just simply didn't have school in session on the days of the election, we wouldn't need the ramp, correct?
That's another option.
Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent, you wanted to say something?
I was just going to say that tonight really is about Tom sharing with you his initial exploration. And one of the things I always think is difficult is to picture something. It's just you're trying to get that building in your mind's eye and so on. So I think if the board was serious and wanted to take another step, that's when we get into some drawings and so on. But this is just like, we stood in a given place at a given day and we were trying to figure out, how could we make this more secure? I mean, we have a secure entrance, but when you have all the people going through it, assuming you've got school in session, is it really secure? So it's like, what might we do? That's where this ramp notion came up and so on. So it's like, is the board serious about going the next step? Because when you start talking about anything that's over a hundred thousand, now we're talking capital improvement plan. We're gonna be coming to you with that in September. Is it worth taking another step, having any kind of drawing done or not? So, I realize that tonight's difficult in the sense that we have no visual. It was literally starting a conversation and kind of coming back and saying we do this, but we wanted it tangential to voting. I mean, voting's gonna happen September ninth. There's not time to do anything now, other than what we've been doing. However, it was incumbent upon us to come back. Chris had done the exploration with the town clerk, and Tom had done this. So we needed to at least share that information. But I realize how difficult it is not having the visual.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
So, with this scenario, the attempt is to remove the secured entrance from the equation and to allow an entrance and egress. Now, I remember when we had the discussion with the clerk that, with moderator, sorry, that the way she does it now is traffic goes in through the school and out through those doors today. You go, you go out those doors and in. So she was concerned if you use one of those doors for both in and out, she was worried about flow. So, I think that if we really want to look at this as a serious thing, and we want to use that one door to go both ways, in and, in and out, we may need to make sure that the ramp and whatever the entrance sort of conduit, you know, the platform at the top is wide enough to handle traffic in both directions that potentially you could divide it. I mean, because if we have a busy election day, you're gonna have people coming in, people coming down. So I think if you're gonna do it right for that purpose, we just may need to take that in mind because now you're gonna have one door serving both purposes as before. Now, so I mean, I'm just, I'm imagining what the pushback will be if we propose this. So, if we're gonna design it, let's think about those ahead of time, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think, Andy, you just hit on something though that I think is interesting. You know, one of the things that we were told was that we needed one entrance and one exit for all voters. And that that should be handicap accessible. And, and, you know, the reality is, it's impossible for that exit way to have been the only way for people to get out, because it's not handicap accessible. So, folks must have, if they were impaired, been finding their way out the main entrance door, right? The other way. So for the majority of the flow, it was, it was going in that direction. In reading through the Secretary of State's guidelines, I thought it was interesting. It says that there shall be at least one primary entrance to the polling place accessible to elderly persons and persons with disabilities and clearly marked with the international symbol of accessibility. If there are entrances that are not accessible, meaning they're allowed, they shall have signs posted directing voters to the accessible entrance. There must be at least one primary accessible entrance to the polling place, which is clearly marked with that symbol. Note, it is strongly recommended that the main entrance also be the accessible entrance. So, I guess my point is, is the requirement is not that there need to be a single one, strongly recommended, and that the main one be handicap accessible, but it's not a requirement that it be one and only one. So I think, I think there may be some leeway here as well in terms of what gets built. Before we start building the Taj Mahal of entrances for something that occurs twice a, you know, twice a year in a, in a good year, I think one of the things we may want to consider is what options do we really have? But I appreciate the work that's gone on with this, and I think we certainly need to consider it. I think as a, as a district, we invested in those secure entrances. They're there for a reason. Recently, in The Telegraph, you may have seen that Nashua actually cited security concerns as one of their reasons for removing polling from a couple of elementary schools in the district and move them to local congregations. So, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we should probably do something. And that while there isn't time to do something before this September's election, we should at least get, get it on the radar and consider all of the options. So, Tom, thank you for bringing this forward. It's very helpful. And that takes us to item number seven on tonight's agenda, planning for future joint town council and school board meeting. You'll recall at a prior meeting, I had begun discussions with the town council and Chairman Yakubov around a joint meeting before his untimely passing. I was recently contacted by new chair Nancy Harrington, who wanted to pick up that work. And so we met and reviewed the notes that Chairman Yakubov and I had taken from that meeting and took the list of topics. I think I shared with the board at the last meeting that we had a number of topics in common that both the council and the school board said were topics that we needed to address. And then there were some on either side additional. Looking at actually running a productive meeting and getting out before a four-hours timeframe, she and I took the liberty to kind of reduce that list and really settled on, in a major way, the topics that we each had in common. Or follow-ups to things that we had discussed before. So the things on the agenda that we discussed are the O'Gara Drive tennis courts, the development off Old Blood Road being called the Chestnut Hill Development, Meramec Safeguard, and the status of the grant request, which has a direct correlation to the funding for the school resource officer at Meramec Middle School. We discussed CIP planning as a topic. The town council put up a warrant article last year for a new highway building. We have had in the past, a recent pass, a warrant article for a central office building. We think coordinating and trying to make sure that those things don't hit the warrants in the same year might make some sense. So, just talking through that. And, time permitting, we'll talk about... And time permitting, we'll talk about recycling and efforts going on at the town and within the school along those levels. And so in terms of dates, I shared with you some proposed dates and I've already heard back one conflict. So Monday, September 22nd was a potential date. Monday, September 29th was a potential date. October, Thursday, October 2nd, I am told, is a Merrimack Safeguard meeting. And so I will let the council know that that date will not work for us. And Thursday, October 16th was another potential date. So of the nine twenty-two, nine twenty-nine, and ten sixteen dates, do we have any other conflicts that we know about? Excellent. This should be, this should be straightforward then. Okay. Any questions or comment? Mr. Powell.
I know it's probably too late at this point, but the discussion we just had on the previous agenda item would be something that I feel would need to be brought up at a joint town school board meeting at some point. So not for this meeting, but maybe for the next one that we have. If we get on to a six-month or, you know, some sort of a quasi-regular schedule of, of these joint meetings, I would suggest having it put on that one.
I like the idea.
And invite the moderator, the town moderator and the school moderator to come.
Excellent. I will do that. Wonderful. Any other comment? Great point. All right. So that takes us now to item number eight on tonight's agenda, modification to the school board meeting schedule. Superintendent Chaffrey.
Thank you. So if you look at your calendar in the immediate future and a bit extended, you'll find that there are two dates that need to be shifted. The first one would be the first board meeting in September because of course Labor Day falls on the first Monday, which is September 1st. So I'm recommending that your meeting be held on Tuesday, September 2nd. And likewise, for Martin Luther King Day in January, it falls on Monday, the 19th, which would be your second board meeting of the month. I'm suggesting that that be Tuesday, January 20th. So hopefully there are no issues with both of those changes.
Mr. Schneider.
Well, those days are okay. It's just if we do an early non-public ahead of time, it could be problematic on those Tuesdays.
And I would think that once you start what I would call your regular schedule, more than likely, I would try to put the non-public at the end as compared to the beginning. I chose that because we were in the summer and it just seemed that maybe...
That's fine. It's just, because I know we have occasionally done them before, so that's just a comment about the potential restrictions.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Ms. Gualyumi.
Is that how we did that or how it was done last year, what was moved to the Tuesday? That's, okay, thank you.
All set? Okay. That takes us to item number nine, other correspondence. There are a couple of pieces of correspondence that came before the board. One is, I was contacted by the superintendent of the Pembroke School System expressing their displeasure with the fact that the NHIAA Division One membership, which includes our principal and athletic director, denied Pembroke Academy a chance to play on our Division One schedule this year. Additionally, I received today, as did the board, requests from a constituent to not fill the vacancy for the assistant principal at Masticola Elementary School. Any other correspondence to come before the board? Ms. Gualyumi.
I received an email from a parent of a high school student regarding the, just the protocols for letting them know how, how their student is doing and before the final grades come out. So that was a piece of email that I had received a short while ago.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number 10, new business. Any new business for the board? Seeing none, I'll move to committee reports. Mr. Schneider.
The Merrimack Safeguard meeting for August was postponed due to people on vacation and the Planning and Building Committee meeting that was supposed to happen the end of July was also canceled because of people on vacation and they hope to have a meeting the end of August so we can, the Planning and Building can have the CIP prior to our next school board meeting. So a couple of non-meetings, but...
Any other committee reports? Quiet days of summer. Ms. Gualyumi.
Just a heads up that the Professional Development Committee will be held on next week Wednesday, August 20th for the summer meeting.
Any others? I have one update. The Technology Curriculum Committee met last week on the 30th and 31st. By all reports, I haven't had a chance to review the readout that was sent to me today, but anecdotally, what I have heard was that they were very productive sessions and that some, some great progress was made where previously the committee had found some barriers. They've broken through some of those issues and feel like they're on a good, good path forward. So that's encouraging and I look forward to reviewing that. And that takes us to item number 12, which I believe to be moot, seeing as there is an empty room, there will be no public comments on agenda items. We will then take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made promptly by Mr. Powell, seconded just as quickly by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Yeah, they actually have them working right at it.
Shoveling out the stalls, really? That's great. Wow. Interesting. Okay. Item F, membership drive. Mr. Ricker called me back about two weeks ago.